Anybody special on anything on the agenda? Minutes.
That's it, you know, if it's gonna be icy or what, we don't know, I mean.
How was the road?
It wasn't horrible. The people were running, they wouldn't go faster than forty-five. So that was a little annoying, but it wasn't, I don't think it was that bad to go that slow.
Like I said, it was safety median mark placed and guy way from Albert Hall in.
I was going sixty before that and I was just fine, so.
I had to go a little rough.
Yeah.
Just got a call.
I had to hear a little rough.
I said it was a lot worse than the Kyle one. By the time you got to Burlington, it was a lot harder.
That's pretty bad down that way.
My husband works for Hamble and they're all staying in the yard today because the roads are too bad.
So yeah, I wish I knew, cause I don't want to go. I hate the little thing, Marty, I was gonna stay on, I have to, where would you say at one-thirty get your buck back?
Supposed to since he'll bring another bus down Friday. Unless you're gonna stay all day, unless you're bringing the boys team down.
Yep, it's all good.
Oh, Kale, he said about six different scenarios on the way home on the bus, you know, cause Darryl right now is laughing, I'm not blaming him.
My memory is so short, I can't remember. We're taking a little bus into suburban thirty with the boys. So Lane's gotta be there as administrator now, Mr. Elliott cannot better was. If they win, they're staying overnight, if not, they're coming home.
Where are they staying at?
I, I don't know.
I went ahead and I had booked a room already for Friday night, cause I knew regardless, we were gonna have to play Friday night. So, but I called you Sunday and I said, I don't know how the world will do, I'm like, well, if the girls are just playing at one-thirty, I'll just go, game will come back. Since the boys are playing at eight, then. Everybody needs to win Friday night, so I could.
You were there last year, weren't you? Well, it's not the high school, it's out east of town.
Yeah.
What's that place called, Jay?
Pretty easy, cause Stroud's not very big, is it?
If you go in on ninety-nine, you'll go over there. They turn back there and at the second intersection, take a left and you don't have to drive by the way.
At that steakhouse, right, right?
There's Amazius Pizza right there.
Yeah, yeah.
The pizza right there, yeah.
Pizza out there, well, turn and go straight.
And you go all the way. You'll pass the school and you'll come to the yellow blinking light, but you don't stop it, it's just caution, cause it's a big giant hill.
And you've gotta, gotta go up over a hill there before you see the school or the gym.
It's really nice.
Yeah, it is.
And you come in on, when you walk in the, into the gym, you're on the second floor and to get on the floor, you have to take the elevator down.
I don't like the feet, unless they're different.
There's stairs to get on the bottom floor.
They wouldn't open the back door for them to come in.
Yeah, there's.
Nothing, they have to walk around the front.
They have a long.
Shield of coil, they gotta stand there with the door open, the other road right there.
Oh, yeah.
Walk up to the third floor, kinda like how we have a top tier at Cherokee. You can walk all the way up to that, but you have to take, you wanna go to the first floor. You have to either go third floor or walk down the stairs and take the elevator to the first floor. It's crazy.
I'm not gonna read all this, I'm not gonna read all them.
You don't mind reading all my resolutions?
I know. You look in the paper, oh yeah, it's all the resolutions stuff. I make a motion to approve.
I second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. You're right.
Green for purchase of power.
W T. I wrote W. Yeah, Walker, W and T, right beside that. You know why? Cause I made the motion and he seconded. You're smart. Yeah, I wish I knew what kinda, cause they talked about taking a little tire since they finally got fixed, can you imagine?
Three hours.
They asked me three hours, for us, for sure. We should have to feed those girls somewhere, why don't we go over to Midway, the McDonald's and feed them there and all of that.
If I called the bus, it'd be, I could have plenty of time and not have to. It wouldn't be too hard to keep up with the bus.
Yeah, you got plenty of time.
They all signed it down there, but they're not allowed to sign for the county, so you need to sign.
You got plenty of time.
Right under David's name.
Cause there's four railroad tracks in Garfield Eden that we have to stop at, oh yeah. I've seen people stop and they pass us, cause if you just passed us, or we did, yeah.
Wonder how many people come over.
What's this for?
This is for more, some more RV hookups out there.
Yeah. Where, where are they going?
That's what Toby asked me, I hadn't even thought about asking him where they were at.
Well, they gotta be careful doing that, cause that orange gag line run through there.
Well, I was wondering too, cause on the black.
There're fiber optic lines in the ditch.
On this blacktop deal too, cause you, you know, they had to put.
Man, how many more they putting in? I have not a clue.
That, they did not say.
Yeah, like twenty of them.
What?
There were twenty of them there and when I was working out there, we only had two. Two functions in four and a half years that they were all full.
That the two were both?
Yeah, and then the rest of the time, we might have four or not.
I think there's not, there are RV parks too.
Yeah, that's what I thought about, this RV park is empty up here. Oh, well. Why do we know?
I wonder what they charge a park there, do they charge it?
But they want us to favor the blacktop out front.
I told Jason, let's go sign.
One point two something million dollars in that account. We can start doing like state Oklahoma and just go take it away. Well, it.
I make a motion to approve.
I second it. All in favor? Aye. M and O warrants for payment.
That's my old air stack, there it is, there it is. Yeah, you can turn.
And then two in one at a time.
Last year, I kept thinking, where is this building at, cause you know, you fucking got the country, but it's really, really nice.
The first time I ever went, I went to the high school and there's like this rundown gym and I got out and was like looking in the windows and I'm like, this can't be it. Cause it was bad.
The first time we went over there and they were leading calves into the gym, they're having a local show and I said, this guy, this is not right. You gotta find the jail.
I went back up to the highway and went and asked the gas station and they told me just keep going. I kept thinking how much.
I can't remember what the name of that place is, but yeah. Yeah, I've been getting water, we kept going across there, I was like, where we going?
It's a while out there, especially if you've never gone, you don't know how long you're going.
I looked at the map of the town, just the shape of it, kind of weird shape. It's real narrow and, and there's another part that's even city limits, it looks like this, like it brings, like it's just a road and then it rains out.
Well, yeah, I said Stroud had that outlet mall on that interstate and all that stuff and that blew away, they didn't put it back, so. Just get on, get on Google Earth and go, and look, you'll find that place, I don't know what it's called, but I can't remember. And they're building something east of it too, it looks like, now.
I already had to double check too, to see where the even places would be. I'm gonna have some breaks in between stuff.
I, I said something to that friend of mine there, like a guy I consider a friend there, Coil? I said, well, this person probably went to Casino, was in nearest Casino, he said downtown, I said, what? Yeah, there's one downtown Coil, I said, really?
Toby talking about staying the night.
So I went up to Darla, I said, no, listen, because I know she likes to go to Casino. I said, do y'all go to Casino tonight? Boy, there's one downtown, uh, Mark her son, Mark, her husband, Mark, said, no, we're not going to Casino downtown. I'm thinking, it's pretty funny.
I knew where to go this time, because what we were dreaming, I knew it was right next door to where the football field was, so.
And you gotta go into the gym, use the restroom, it's like concession stand.
Did you go in and check out their trophy room?
No, I didn't.
Pretty nice.
I liked their gym, I liked it. It was plenty of space.
I like it too. Well, between the seats too, plenty of space. They did good.
What surprised me, I talked to Coach Webb about that, you know what that gym cost? One point eight million dollars it is all.
It was a gym and a football field together, they did.
Well.
Well, it cost more, but yeah.
It'd be a good thing.
When they put the two storm shelters underneath the, the bleachers, they got back eight hundred thousand from the federal government.
I don't know if it had to be signed out.
I can tell you a lot of things to do, so.
Needs to be paid those.
It would help them out.
I don't know, we're rolling to down, I don't know where they put the new gym, I guess they cleared that whole spot off.
Yeah, they've got everything locked, know what the Mr. Elliott have now.
And they have that spot there where Gosling's own, just to the south.
The only thing, the, the football coach was talking to me, he said, the only thing we forgot is someplace for the radio announcers to be. Must have used their upper with us.
Yeah, they don't really have much of a press box.
No. Even the filming deal up there, you had to stand up because that bar's high enough, they needed to lower that down a little bit, so you could at least sit on a chair when you're filming.
I don't mind it, that's all. You gotta get to higher.
Uh, tripod.
And that's a blanket, I'm sorry, I didn't sign up here, so, you know, you signed on there.
Pierce saying anything about his son getting a technical?
It's a blanket for.
I wonder if Pierce said anything about his son gets a technical.
You have to save an report.
Did you see that? You stayed for that game, the booth game?
No.
Preston got a technical in the game.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, he made a shot right at the end of the half, first half and turned around and made a motion and said something to either the bench or one of the players and they cheated him off pretty quick.
Really?
He didn't act surprised, so.
His dad said, well, the second one was just caught, and I said, teaching Sonny Stan mouth. I wasn't very nice, that's, that's the second one he's got, or the third one.
I was sitting next to, I was sitting on the Cowayton side and I was sitting next to a lady and I said, well, that's not gonna go over too long, cause that's the coach's son. I said, he's gonna get it in the locker room, he's gonna get it after the game, he's gonna get on the way home.
Oh, well, the next day.
When he watches film again.
Yeah.
What did Joey do that he was?
Like, he didn't do what he's supposed to, I guess.
I don't think he was running the right place, or in the right spot.
Joey has that problem most of all.
And he was just chewing down like one side and down the other, then I'm like, oh gosh, he didn't react that way to.
He doesn't know.
Preston's tea, but he, both of you was chewing, Billy up on the side.
I thought they were gonna blow it and I'll take it out.
I've worked on him, on that, but his son, Stroud, the game. Especially when the son and girlfriend were sitting, girlfriend's here and son's right here and they're nose about that far apart, that seat, uh, you see your son, you know? You know, that boys and girls sitting the same seat, whatever, and he thought he saw it.
Is this girlfriend?
Jaden, Sarah's daughter.
Attorney would never let us, you know, on the bus, there's always had to be a seat or two, two rows in between us and the girls.
Oh, well.
And then even, even before they, before we played, he wouldn't let us sit with any of our, any of the girls. Because he didn't want us to be distracted.
Cause Rousey was still here, we were meeting Kale over at the Conoco there on four twelve. And he calls me, he said, I, I don't think they are not, but if Drew and Utah are sitting in the same, same seat, he might wanna tell them to get separated before I get on the bus. Of course they were, and I went back and I said, you guys, whatever you want to, Coach Pierce called me, told me, it wasn't very long, they, you know. Look, that's why I ragged on him pretty hard, cause you know, these were the rules, now your son's sort of getting a little close to breaking these rules, huh? Cause Camden and the Sarah girl, you know, but they.
They're not dating.
They're not dating, what are you talking about? You ask either one of them.
But she sits up the front, more of the towards the front, and he sits back there. Of course, his rule is during playoffs, everybody's supposed to ride home on the bus.
That's a weird rule.
Talk about a coach that drives off and gets his filmer too, so you know.
Said that filmer shouldn't talk still though.
Too much. I'll go, I'm gonna have to. Sure you have them. Darn, Monita always puts them together.
I give you all the chance in the world to, to veto them, that's why I put them together, so you can pick and choose which one you love or veto them.
K T, you're gonna have to worry about me, yeah.
What?
Hey, we'll get you a stamp to veto ours, on the top it'll say veto, but I would bought the stamp to the same proof.
Do you send these through or do you have to approve those before you put the blankets?
Yeah, you gotta wait.
Yeah. Yeah, go to Shidler's gym. Or go to Ollie's, go to Ollie pit.
I've been to Shidler's, I was in the regionals there, yeah, with regionals last year, was at Shidler. That's another one of those long drives, just want to get out by the lake.
I went around through bulk.
That's where we go.
I didn't, I don't wanna go to these places enough to know the truth.
I don't like that rat hole down there anyway.
I don't either.
Not a very nice end.
Barnett told them girls were playing out in the middle of pasture, they wouldn't believe he, we're about halfway up it from the park, that road. One of them said, we are out in the middle of pasture, aren't we, I said, yeah, we are, it's all grassland here.
Trey wouldn't let his parents come to the house, cause he was afraid that they would think that we lived in the middle of pasture, and I'm like, I do live in the middle of pasture.
What's wrong, what's wrong with it, I love you, yeah, you live in the pasture. It's where a bunch of dirt is blowing.
You're getting, you have an automatic gate or is it, you have to get out?
Well, I don't have it shut all the time, I just wanna have the cattle.
I'm just gonna get you an automatic gate.
Alright, that's what my brother said, my brother said, about two times opening that and I would have an automatic gate, I said, well, if you wanna make donations, it's fine.
Uh, after my get.
Who's it for?
Three though.
Two, three.
Got three on here, yeah, yeah.
About the only one? Who are they for?
Um.
What district?
Three and two.
They need to sign them then.
You said two twenty, right?
Yes.
Yeah, three.
What's your two? We need to do something on the M and O. Make a motion for the M and Os.
I second that rascal. All in favor?
Aye. Okay, on the blankets.
Blanket.
We, we got, this is him.
You got a button chair, Samuel.
Oh. I got a bunch, Jay got a bunch.
You and Jay, there is, and that's for you.
Oh, wow.
Here is County General for Jay and then Sheriff, you don't have to sign those two.
Just gotta, Jay just gotta acknowledge them.
You got these written down already, kind of you?
Yep, I sure do.
Got these written down?
Yep.
Are they all handles?
Is fire out out west, or have you heard?
I haven't heard, but I figured, cause there's some kinda, part of the stormers moved through there last night, so.
Yeah, though last night, they had a few ox block to throw out and one of them.
It's icy weather would really help that.
They got, sound like they got pretty good rain up there.
What'd you guys get?
Well, I heard from half, over half to three quarters here in Cherokee's what I was hearing.
When I checked, that's this morning, they don't have like.
I think it froze up.
There's more water.
It never is very active, but.
Medical, her dad up there on, his form on Highway eleven got.
I had those.
Well, um, they said Carmen had like two inches.
Enough for the governor to cancel the Barnett?
Probably she will.
You guys are still in effect though, no matter what.
Right.
Unless she cancels yours.
We're supposed to get more rain this week.
That's what Kyle and I are discussing, because icy and stuff, we call these tournaments, is, yeah, Stroud and what are we gonna do, we are.
I don't really wanna pay ninety dollars for a room I'm not using.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to know if we're, might be a possibility of staying all night, you know, get, I'd like to have, take the clothes the next day.
I mean, I'm planning on staying Thursday night and Friday night, coming home Saturday. I may not, I mean, depending on what happens Friday night, I may not even stay all the way for late game on Saturday.
Well, we brought up top jersey, he was thinking maybe really good, she, the girls got a good chance of getting into the finals. Once they do, Lohol's still in it.
Yeah, I can't believe that one. I cannot believe it.
There's behind Blue Jacket, ten points and not much time left, they come back and beat them.
Yep. That little under Ken out there, you gotta. I make motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
I might have to check the birth certificate of that number fifteen kid.
Who are we talking to?
Can I just give them both to you?
Point guard for Covington.
It probably, it'll have a birth certificate.
There's no way, he's only a freshman. He kinda, he kinda whipped.
Well, if we don't try to stop him, well, Camden did the best it could, there's nobody gonna help him. Yeah, the kid up beside me said, that guy, when they come over, he said, uh, looks like basketball over there, he made a mistake, he hit you.
To. Right on the county line. Road car, anybody? I think that's the district three, isn't it?
It says district three.
Huh? I'll make a motion to.
Sports fair's the name of that rig, then, they're well down there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Since.
It's gonna work.
Second.
The ball to that.
I really don't know what they're doing. I can tell you what you're all damn darling drilling, that's the problem.
We need to. The problem with me, we all know me.
Check.
So around fifty bucks.
You're a big blower.
What is this one?
What's that?
Three, two, twenty, nine, twelve.
It's gotta be yours, ain't it, Jay? Where's five, twenty, eight, twelve? Two thirty, two twenty, twenty nine, twelve.
Twenty seven.
Twenty nine's clear up north.
Twenty nine's north. It's twenty nine, what is it?
Five.
Twelve, five thirty two.
Twenty eight, nine.
Be right up in here. Yeah, it would be. Be on Jerry.
Just one.
West, west quarter, section five, twenty eight, twelve to southeast quarter, section three, two, twenty nine, twelve.
Oh, I know where it's at, yeah.
It is yours, right?
Yeah, yeah, it is.
But, you know, the South Commission will take it if you wanna donate.
No, no.
Let's hear that. I said South Com.
With the makes of that?
Yeah, well, you know, we just, you know.
This is district.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll take all of it, you can go get them, have, once you got all the money.
Uh, we're in.
Motion on that.
Nope.
Not, not.
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah, we have.
Wait, no, I'll make it.
Uh, stand and.
Sure.
Do we vote?
No, I haven't seen her in nine. I don't know.
Okay. Bye.
Okay. Ball in favor?
Aye. About that, got that passed.
There's two copies of that, private property sign.
We got that.
Get Toby one back.
We need to, we need to, just one day, just put, put the place on. Farmer.
He sits way back there, he might not notice anymore. He plays the concrete on the farmer.
Yeah, put a car on Farmer's.
Got to die in both of these.
Yes, it's the same one.
Where were the road crossings, what districts?
One and three.
One and three.
District three was seven hundred fifty dollars, district one was five hundred dollars.
Just one of each.
One of each, yeah.
And this is here, this here's a mile east of Jet and three quarters north, taking out the trees. Since Trey standing on Farmer no more, the family brothers have it. In fact, Trey doesn't even live here anymore. Don't you know that?
I didn't know that until a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, it don't sound good. Make a motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Already did the written quote, didn't you?
No, we didn't.
Written votes for more new RV hookups.
Three years, they requested to accept Moyers, it's the lowest.
Moyer.
And I did call, I did email the auditor on this and she agreed, it was a title sixty-one, so it's just, um. Uh, it'll be a service, we have to do the three written quotes. And I asked her if we could do the agreement and do the quotes in the same meeting and pay for the agreement, and she said, yes, we could.
Sounds like you're one before the other.
This is gonna be right next to the show barn. It's kinda dumb.
Probably on the west, does it say west side?
Oh, it just says, right here to, uh. Six new pedestals by the show barn. You gotta be on the west side or the north end.
Well, I would put it, I'd put it on the west, but. That's sort of gonna be in the way, but then again. I guess for stock shows, it don't have to matter.
So, you make the motion to accept.
Oh, look at it.
Moyer, that could keep them, or Moyers, not Moyer.
They're out of Woodward, are they?
What's his name down there?
Six back-to-back pedestals, so you could probably have twelve, couldn't you?
Right.
That's my guess.
Yep, that's the way the others are, well, what's his name with Gold Creek?
By Show Barn.
Did the others have?
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Berkan.
Good thing they were little ones today.
And that does come out of there, sure?
Yeah, what?
No, that does come out of their grounds.
I just wish they'd put the lights on in the arena, they've been out for three years now, all the way. It's one dark puppy out there tonight. You got two on the north and there's three on the west and two on the south. And there's one on the west burning.
The outside arena, right?
I told, I'm making it to them a dozen times. Don't get done.
Eddie Miller? KC Electric, you want to tell it, Eddie Miller I know.
Talk to A C, A E C boys, they tell you don't hire KC Electric. They've got all kinds of problems with them, rolling, oh my. That's why we've had a half a dozen fires, they put their line over the top of A E C's. It's about that far down, that wind gets a flopping. It knocked thirteen resistors out east of Byron here two or three weeks ago, caught a fire.
Ten thousand dollars cheaper than KC Electric. And six thousand dollars cheaper than the other one.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to go for Moyer Electric.
Second. All in favor of party?
Aye.
The amount on it is seventeen thousand five hundred for the twelve. Just back back one, 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 copy of each one, okay?
Declaration of Sherif, County Court for scanning, one, two, three, four, five, eight, board numbers, so and so and so.
There's both, and I'm gonna scan or go down.
Must have been both together, at least it's just two of them, they're like twenty-five.
Had to buy a new one. It went through a lot of copies though, didn't it, Riley?
Riley's one that broke it, right?
Riley broke it.
Your scanner, your scanner gave out, did it?
I'm pretty mild.
It's coming out of Riley's paycheck.
She doesn't know that yet.
Don't tell her.
You better wait, buy it.
From now until the next month, end of fiscal year, I mean, she's not gonna get one, but she doesn't know that yet.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Yeah.
Put Kyle down for the.
Did you say he makes a motion?
Put Kyle down for the motion. I'll second it.
If it works like that, I'll, as soon as the meeting starts, I'll just make a motion to adjourn.
That's Jay's motion.
We'll never get any, you'll never get any business done.
I make a motion to approve this too.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, remind your guys payroll, Monita, before they leave for Friday. Thursday's fine, just bring.
Mine's, mine's working on it.
And I'll put the burn ban on next week.[1795.71]
Or not, mine's working on it.
Yeah, she already told me she was.
Oh, yeah, she makes sure, she, we, make sure we tell it, okay?
Want me to put anything under that unforeseen business? No.
No.
Yeah. Little way here in Cherokee.
All in favor?